I want to call to order the regular meeting of the Solvang City Council for May 23, 2016. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yep.
Jameson?
Here.
Skid?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Present.
Mayor Richardson?
Here. Mrs. Jameson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Okay, everybody stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on the agenda this evening is a proclamation for Bob Mendoza, recognizing his 26 years of service to the city. He's retired, and unfortunately, he's not here, but I'm still going to read the proclamation because after 26 years in retiring, it's a loyal, a good loyal employee, and we hate to see him go, actually. So, here you go, Bob, if you're listening. "In recognition and appreciation of Bob Mendoza upon his retirement after 26 years of service to the city of Solvang, whereas the city of Solvang owes a debt of gratitude for the commitment Bob Mendoza has provided to this city and community for more than two and a half decades. Whereas during his tenure with the city, Bob, with his many duties, has mowed more than 4,000 acres of lawn, which is twice the size of Solvang. Whereas no one felt worse than Bob as he watched the lawn at Solvang Park that he has manicured for so long, struggle and wither as the drought went on and on. Whereas after 26 years of roaming through Hans Christian Andersen Park, he is the only employee who can locate and uncover every irrigation box and water shut-off valve that gets buried in weeds and dirt every year. Whereas an avid reader, Bob could always be found in his office at lunchtime, feet up on his desk, deep into a Louis Lamour classic or Clive Kessler adventure. Whereas Bob is always willing to lend a hand to the recreation crew, from helping to put together sports equipment building to building memorable set places for the haunted house, including the fan favorite Pirate Cannon. Whereas after one small incident when Bob's personal truck rolled backwards from the annexed building's parking lot, threw the fence in the parking lot four, he learned to always remember to put on the parking brake. Whereas the staff always knew when Bob was going home for the day, as he became by each desk and offered a smile and a "see you tomorrow" greeting in his beloved comfortable Croas. Crocs. Oh, that's how it's spelled. And whereas Bob's retirement date was finally set, he was known to say that waiting for that last day is like watching water come to a boil, slow and arduous. And whereas after 26 years, matched only by one other recent retiree, Bob is retiring as the longest ever serving employee with the city of Solvang. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Richardson, on behalf of the Solvang City Council and staff, express our thanks and appreciation to Bob Mendoza, and wish him well as he tackles some overdue house projects and takes more time traveling to San Diego to support his favorite NFL team, the Chargers. And Bob, thanks, if you're listening, Bob, thanks so much for your service to the city. We really appreciate it." Next is the city manager's report.
And I'll make sure Bob gets a copy of that. He's a very shy guy, and I could not coach him into coming into the meeting, so. Other things I want to announce, Lisa Martin has got her notary. She's now a public notary for the city of Solvang.
Oh, that's good.
I was her first client. I signed something today.
Very good. You got your thumbprint.
Got my thumbprint. And then just for those inquisitive customers, we will have tile put in the lobby this weekend. So, the long three-day weekend, they're going to come in and replace that tile, so we'll finally get out of the construction zone. So, that's my report.
Our next public communications, written or verbal. At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. I have several speakers slipped, and first is Shirley Stacy. Followed by Gil Chavez.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm just here to report on the last county library advisory committee meeting, which was on May 11. The first thing that came up was the library tax measure, and basically, they reported that nothing will be on the ballot this year in November, except for Galita, who was doing their own, own measure for their city or for their CSA. They have, it has two components, a city parcel tax and a county parcel tax, and they're pretty, more or less decided on $18. They're not really sure if they're going to go ahead. They're doing some polling, see how people are feeling about it, and they're also not sure if the poison pill applies. They have to get some advice on that. Poison pill being that either both the city and the county areas win or neither one does. Okay, as far as Zone One report, there were, Zone One is the zone that Santa Barbara City is in charge of, and it includes libraries in the valley and carpenteries, as well as others. They talked about 1,000 books before kindergarten program that kicked off in March, a summer reading program, and an in-and-out reading program. But actually, you can tell that the emphasis more and more is on technology. They are going, they added a hoopla, digital service. They added, they're adding an online learning module, Library Academy, that was launched. Then they got a grant for five staff members to attend the Harwood Public Innovators Lab for public libraries. So, it's really moving in that direction, in the direction of technology. The other thing of special note to us here in the valley is that there's a meeting, let's see, the June 6th, with this library tax measure. They are going to explore a county-wide district for libraries, or just for elections. And the idea of creating zones rather than trying to do the whole county at one time came up. So, that's what the meeting in Beelton on June 6th is about. It's at 1:00. And then the one other thing is the, of course, the ad hoc committees meeting, Solvang and Beelton City Council ad hoc committees. They've met one time to discuss the per capita split, and that's all I know. You may hear more about that from someone else, but that's all I know. Yes.
You mentioned that the city of Santa Barbara is overseeing the area, area, or--
Zone One, yeah.
Zone One. And then you talked about programs. Now, are those programs circulating between the various libraries on behalf--
Yes, in all, all the libraries in Zone One.
They'll be rotating those programs all throughout them?
Yes, right.
Okay, that's good to know they're getting involved in that.
Yeah, no, it's very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Shirley. Next is Gil Chavez. Followed by Wendy Reed.
Good evening. My wife and I, Joanne, and I have lived in Solvang for 30-plus years. We happen to live on Skid Mesa, and we are here to address you about the homes that are being built right now in Phase Four, but I am going to acquiesce that portion of what I'm talking about to Hank Holmberg, who will, you know, who will come and address this. My major concern about Phase Four is that as they've started to move toward Chalk Hill Road, the grading has increased eight to 10 feet above road level on Chalk Hill Road, which is quite a, quite a bunch of dirt. So, the dirt that was moved from older buildings is now moved towards Chalk Hill Road, and I was a little concerned about the environmental study and the changing of the elevation of where these new homes are being built. Has there been one? And if there is, where is it? And what is it? I, both Joanne and I are, have a beautiful view of the mountains, because we're south-facing, and as we all know, that's going to be changed drastically with some of the larger homes. I'm sure, I'm sure most of you knew Henry, his uncle. You know, Henry came to me years ago, and he, he said, you know, Gil, I'm going to build homes here, is that going to bother you? And I said, Henry, it's, you know, who am I to say what to do with your property? He said, Gil, he said, the homes that I, that I'm going to build are going to be of top quality, and the ones closest to you are going to be of the highest quality. As they have approached Chalk Hill Road, they seem to be of lesser quality, and as, over the years, as Skid Mesa has evolved, we seem to be getting a lot of homes, a lot of new homes, but not very much quality. And that does concern me, and I am concerned about the property value of my home. Henry built that small, little subdivision down on the other side of the creek, and, you know, he told me, he said, Gil, these homes are going to be as good as, in quality, and as good and well-built as your house, and I had no problem with it. Henry's word was his word. I'm a little concerned now. Lots of houses, lots of new houses, not very much quality, but I think we have another problem with the terms of the height, and I'm going to let Hank discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Because you mentioned Hank, I think I'll ask Hank to come up next, because Wendy, is that all right? Okay, good. Hank Holmberg?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thanks, Gil, for putting me on the hot seat earlier than I thought, but I'm here tonight, basically, to augment what I've sent you all. I hand-delivered it through City Mail, and I've also electronically emailed you both, or everyone on the council, as well as city manager and city attorney. The biggest concern with the whole Phase Four of the Skid Mesa, which is based off of this design plan, is that the design plan wasn't followed, and there's deviations in the design plan, namely, the large structured Northern European roof line, which is 32 feet in height at a level field. And this, this actual, I don't know if you can see this or not on camera, if you can see that, but this is two blocks away from where the edge of the Skid Mesa is going to be built. So, I'm all for Skid Mesa building homes, and according to the original plan, all those homes that were going to be on lots 159 through 169, which is on the edge of Adobe Creek, that runs right across from where we live on Abletoff Way, were all going to be the low-height homes. Well, my neighbor went to the sales office, and she found out that seven out of the 10 lots were going to be either French country or Northern European designs, which are the 32-foot roof heights, which is absolutely unacceptable, according to the design plan and according to the view that we would have if that did, did happen, because basically, we would see what looks like seven drive-in movie theaters right across from the canyon. So, my concern now is that this is going forward. I talked to Ms. Pelster about this, who is the planning commissioner for the city, and about a week and a half ago, she said it's pretty much a done deal. And then this morning, I walked in to try to get a map of the Phase Four area and try to find out if there were any environmental impact reports done with the public involvement, and there was none, as far as these deviations go with the size of the homes. And she told me that the city manager and the city attorney were meeting and discussing the issue, and it looked like it was going to be quashed with regard to the high height, 32-foot structures that were going to be built on the edge of that canyon, which I'm very hopeful for. I haven't seen anything in writing yet, and I'm hoping to see something in the near future so we don't have to continue with this issue any longer. Again, I'm sure you guys have all seen this Skid Mesa design manual. Everything is in here. It's pretty cut and dry, and in addition, the city also has policies and procedures with regard to the general plan. The general plan clearly states on several issues, namely, policy, let me see here, I got to get my glasses on. Policy 8D, buildings on major ridge line, canyon edges, which is where lots 169 through 159 are located, and hilltops shall be made visually unobtrusive by sensitive siding, grading, and landscaping. That's not my writing, that's the city's general plan, which legally, that is legal and binding. As well as number seven, on the, on the general plan for residential homes, community design plan, which is also adopted by the city. Number seven, buildings should have a harmonious relationship with the surrounding neighborhood. Significant factors in establishing this relationship are the sense of scale, roof lines, colors, and textures of material. Well, folks, this, this is not in scale, and this lot line right here is right across the canyon, about 100 feet from us, and if you build a 32-foot structure on a raised eight-to-10-foot graded, graded lot, I was talking about drive-in movie theater situation is definitely going to happen. So, basically, that's what it would look like across from the canyon from our home.
That's to scale?
Pretty much to scale, yeah. I tried to do it as logically as I could. If you're not familiar with the area, I would highly suggest coming to our neighborhood. We'd be happy to have you all walk through to see for yourself the impacts that this would have on the neighborhood. Again, I'm not a NIMBY, I'm not opposed to Skid Mesa progressing and building the homes, but I want the low-height homes and not the French country slash Northern European homes that have 32-foot roofs. And you'll see that in what I sent you. On the back pages, there are actually pictures of those two unacceptable designs. There's four more designs that Skid Mesa could build on those lots.
Thank you, Hank, for that input. We appreciate that, and we actually appreciate the letters also.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Wendy and Jay, Brad has got an answer to your problem. If you'd like to speak right now, that's fine, but he can short-circuit the process if you'd like. If you want to go up and talk, please do, but Brad, Brad has got some late information based on your problem. Would you like to speak, or would you like to wait till after he says? Okay. And Jay? Is that okay?
Yes, Mr. Hamburg, right. The, the design guidelines would prohibit the Northern European in those lots, and a letter is going to go out to that, that effect to the developer tomorrow. We've not approved any. There was three, I think, submitted in that, submitted but not approved for land clearance or building permit, so those will be rejected as a submittal, and he'll have to resubmit with a different design for those three homes.
Thank you. Do you understand, did you understand what he meant and what he said? Is that you guys are winning, you know? It's going, it's going a letter to the developer tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll give you a copy of that. Actually, the French style, I think, is about 23 feet, so it's not in the 30-foot, so.
So, so, you've been effective. I want to thank you for that, for the letters, and you can see what you can do by just raising, raising the flag, and things, things will happen in the city. Yes. Why don't you come back up to the mic so we can hear you?
Thank you for listening to me again. One thing that did concern me with this whole process is that city government has a process of checks and balances, whether it's city council, the planning commission, the Board of Architectural Review, which is all right here that bought into this, and I'm sure there was a lot of man-hours put into this, and to deviate from that without having any public input, to me, is not the way government should work, especially when this affects a neighborhood that's been there for over 30 years. This is devastating, that this could even be processed through City Hall, through the planning department on Ms. Pelster's desk, without having any kind of public input. None of the neighbors that are represented here tonight have ever had anything in writing from any of these deviations that were presented tonight, and I think that, that looks bad on the city attorney, that looks bad on city manager, and that looks especially bad on the planning department of the city of Solvang. So, I hope that we've all learned a lesson with this oversight, and that the public will eventually be involved in these kind of decisions that were made in the loop of city government, but without any kind of public input.
I believe that that, that hasn't been approved yet. If not, those houses have not been permitted, so that we're at the beginning of that process that you're asking about right now.
Okay, but my understanding is, is Mayor, with all due respect, that the developer came to a Board of Architectural Review meeting back in March and proposed to have some changes made. Again, we were not told anything. Do we all have to go to Board of Architectural Review meetings to keep up on what's going on that's going to affect our neighborhood?
Well, those are announced meetings, and yes.
With regard to change, I mean.
Well, we can't, we can't, we can't phone everybody up and say, the meeting's coming, and this is what's happening. We publish it, and the agenda is published, and it's up to the citizenry to be on top of that.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the requirements we have, so. And you, and I'm glad you came tonight, because you are on top of it, and you caught the action, and you've done well, so.
Well, I appreciate it, and, and I hope, I hope this rectifies the situation, because, you know, Solvang's a beautiful place, and I would hate to see--
I'm on your side, believe me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
Thank you for coming. Is there any more public comment? Karen, it's okay. Announce yourself.
Karen Wade, I am citizen of Solvang. I'm also on the Board of Architectural Review, and I am an intended candidate for city council. But I wanted to address the general public regarding the comment on the types of homes going in and, and what the Board of Architectural Review had to say. We, being the Board of Architectural Review, we are not city planning, so we would not have approved that particular style of home. We were particularly looking at colors and textures and landscaping, and yes, this was brought to our attention at the last meeting. And I'm, I'm very happy to see that it's, that it's being looked at, and I also do understand that it hasn't been approved yet, so I also wanted to make that very clear, just in the defense of the city government in general.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, so Wendy, why don't you come up? We have a speaker slip for you.
I'm getting better and better at the public speaking. I think I'll pay attention this better than--
Yeah, turn that guy on.
It's on, isn't it? Oh, the button, yeah. Okay, first off, little comment.
Get a little closer to the mic, please.
We do hope that the commitments that we heard or think were made would be followed by the city, whether or not we watchdogged every meeting. And I'm saying that because I'm not as mollified or excited by the idea that somebody's going to hold the developers' feet to the fire about this last batch of houses, because there are, I haven't had time to go through the whole Skid Mesa to compare how many of the houses that are already built are non-conforming to the design manual, but I know 146 and lots 146, 148, 75, those guys are, and I'll bet there's a lot more. I just haven't gone through and counted them and pointed them out yet. So, I'm wondering, how did that happen? That bothers me. And the other big issues that we keep talking about are the grading levels. Is that in conformance with the original or final grading plans, or are those grades higher and shouldn't be? Because if they were allowed to be that high, that means the whole idea of just single-story heights was kind of negated by, oh, well, we'll just have single-story height, which they're not agreeing, they didn't plan to follow through with, but they're also raising that up, so it's like, not consistent with the plan. The other, this dust control issue is really important to a lot of us. A lot of us have called on it for years, that there's no water trucks being used, and there's huge plumes of dust just flying off property. When we call, people say, even the county says, well, it's not supposed to leave the site, and it does, but the guy who, you know, inspects that, he says, I'm in a tight spot between, our offices are in Santa Maria and they're in Santa Barbara, so by the, when you call us and say, come out and see this dust control that isn't happening, you know, they may or may not be able to get there in time or that day or whatever, but we've made, a lot of people have made calls, and I guess, I would like to know how the city has been responding to those calls, those complaints, because it just keeps going on and on. Today, it went on today. I mean, it's, it's this dust thing, I know it's a drought, but water tanks, I mean, water trucks are required. If not, then do they have some kind of variance, and what procedure went through for that? So, it's not just, you know, my backyard, those big houses on elevated land, in my view, it's, what's going on there? I'd like to know, who is the contract manager? Who has been the contract manager for that project? Who is right now? Somebody's supposed to be paid by the city to monitor what's going on over there.
It's, our planning director is the contract manager right now.
Well, I think that there's probably some records of monitoring of things, and that we should be able to have a nice dialogue with the city to find out answers to our questions. How did these things happen, and how are they being monitored, and are they being adequately seen to? Because as this stuff gets, this building gets closer and closer to our houses, all this dust and grit that's accumulating now, and they're hundreds of feet away, as it gets closer, we're just, it's going to be blowing right in our windows, and that's just not right. So, it's going to get worse and worse, so this is really important. So, you got, there's three items. Who knows if we'll find more? We're not out to get Skid, we just want things to be done right.
Thank you, Wendy. It's been noted. Jay, did you want to speak then? Jay, did you want to speak then?
I'm Jay Means. My wife Teresa and I have been residents of Solvang since 2005 and have owned this home on Abletoff Way since 2007. We moved there before much of the development had occurred, but we noticed with increasing alarm, as we saw that earth was being moved from the lower portions of the Mesa to the upper portions of the Mesa in increasing quantities. It's obvious that the designers of the development have the intention of tiering that Mesa front in such a way that the homes in successively higher levels are provided with a viewscape that is attractive to their homes. And at the same time, that movement of earth to the upper reaches of the Mesa along Chalk Hill has brought the levels up, as I think Gil already mentioned, eight feet or more. My recollection is it's more than eight feet. It has been moved to heights that necessitated building retaining walls along the Adobe Creek, Hans Christian Anderson Park margin. And this means that the intention of the developer to create viewscapes or vistas, as the development is called, for their residents were conducted in, without regard to existing homeowners along Abletoff Way and Chalk Hill. The, we went to the Board of Architectural Review meeting and presented our concerns, and we were listened to, and I'm very glad of that. We drafted this letter and got signatures from several of the residents in the area stating the similar concerns. But the issue of the rooftops is, of course, a large component of this, but the fact that the grading of that community has compromised a significant portion of that viewscape already. We used to be able to see quite clearly across the park into the mountains, and now that is obscured by a great amount of earth that's been moved up there. We noted to the review board, the Board of Architectural Review, that the community design elements in the city of Solvang prohibited the use of Northern European architecture in that, outside the village, and the boundaries of the village are very defined. And we also noted that the Skid Mesa Design Manual then went ahead and said that they were going to build structures that were two stories high instead of the one-story limit that was originally part of the plan. And we're wondering how that change occurred without review, without comment. And we're also concerned about, as I said earlier, the large amounts of earth that had been moved from the tiered levels of the Mesa development up to block the areas in front of our homes. So that's the two major points that we're concerned about. And, of course, the dust, as Wendy mentioned, is a daily concern, and it's ongoing. Anytime the wind comes up in the afternoon at 4:00, we have dust covering the exterior and interior of our homes from that development, almost on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please come up and identify yourself.
My name is Michael Lohman, and I live on Chalk Hill. I was involved in the early development of this project quite extensively. And one of the key features that we looked at were the impacts of the scenic vistas being at the 246, at the entry and exit of Solvang. And these are all the points that are identified on the general plan. And now, on Chalk Hill, there's three of them. And there's one of them as you head towards the Mesa. And there's actually two as you're coming into Solvang, coming up to the Mesa. And so in the final plan that was originally approved, the soil was going to be graded along Chalk Hill such that it would berm up, and there'd be a slight wall, and then landscaping. And then the houses actually sit down slightly lower, so that the view would be across maybe some rooftops, but you wouldn't be looking at the backs of houses. And I'm sort of curious what's happened with the landscaping, because there's quite a setback along Chalk Hill, but there's no landscaping yet. So I don't know what the timing is for that. But the grading currently is not consistent with what was originally approved. So I don't know if this is something that could be brought to the Planning Commission, if it could be a suggestion of the council to review the scenic vistas in compliance.
For that, that's my next question, is what is the grading plan? And is it approved? And is it being followed?
Matt Vanderlinen has been on vacation for the last two weeks, so I wasn't able to follow up with him on if there's been significant changes to the grading. But that's one of the things we'll be reviewing when he gets back.
If the grading plan is being followed, I think that's the plan. If it's not being followed, then it will be corrected. So it's, thank you for bringing that to our attention also. Is there any more speakers? Seeing none, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I've got a question. What kind of changes took place after first phase when the new developer got involved? Was 2 through 4 completely redone?
Are you talking about the landscaping or the...?
Well, just in general, grading, grading building. I know we got different, completely different floor plans.
I'm going to ask Arlene to come up and answer that one. But as you're aware, the landscaping in phases 3 and 4 did change.
Yeah, the drought, yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just curious what happened from the initial concepts to, you know, what happened in that changeover?
Yeah, just to refresh everybody's memory, after Phase 1, the recession hit. The project went into foreclosure and was purchased at auction by a new company with a new developer and a new builder. That company actually did market research. They felt that the units that had been approved, the floor plans were too big, so they came in and they made some changes. They still meet the design guidelines, all the architectural review requirements. The B R has seen them quite a few times, because, as some of the speakers correctly noted, you know, they've been kind of tweaking and changing them to meet market demands. But it's still, they still comply with the design guidelines. There were no changes to that, because this project had already been approved. So if the new builder had wanted to change it, they would have had to come back to the city and apply to change it. It would have reopened the whole thing, including the environmental review.
How about the grading? Is that consistent with the original? We don't know that, because Matt's not here.
Yeah, that's really Public Works. That's their arena. We do work with them on it, but that's some where they're, you know, Brad is the former Public Works Director, can speak better to that than I.
Yeah, I need to check with Matt on what's been going on with the grading.
All right.
I don't want, I don't give you an answer, because I'm not...
I think that would be one of my big questions, is that grading? Was that, is it per the original, or did that change somewhere along the line also?
I'm sorry, but we can't hear you? No, you'll have to come up to the mic.
The height of the roofs, I think, has also changed. It's even different in reality from what the plans, the elevation plans in the files at the city show. So that's another thing, besides the grading. You know, maybe landscaping changed, maybe floor plans have changed, but also, I think, roof heights have.
Thank you. There was an E I R for the original project. There's been no changes significant enough to change that E I R, or it would have to be released and go through the whole process again. And that's quite an expensive process, and so that the new developer doesn't want to do that. He wants to follow the same original guidelines that were in the E I R, so. So if there's any changes, they're either going to be very minor, or they're going to be flagrant violations. So those will be found. Are there anybody else who wishes to speak? It's public comment time now. Thank you, Arlene. Thank you, then. We'll go on to the next item in the agenda, which is council comments and requests. Would you like to start, Mr. Zimmerman?
Sure. All I have to say is I want to make sure that we resolve this issue and maybe put up some kind of flags with the height, and maybe have a 30-day protest of some kind. But definitely, let's look into the elevations and make sure the developer is living up to what he agreed to originally. And that's all. Thank you.
You're suggesting story polls. Is that what you're talking about? Yes, yeah, yeah. Mr. Skip?
I'm glad they brought, people brought this to their attention, our attention. In regards to story polls, I really don't think this need, but what we do need to do is make sure that the city staff does maintain the original provisions that were in the design guidelines provided to the developer. And I think there's like 169 requirements that the designs have to follow. And to make sure that they do follow those designs, and make sure that the developer does not try to skate through and sneak something through on something. And make sure they have the sales staff. Maybe the sales staff needs to have some education on what buildings and what designs can be sold on what lots. It kind of sounds like the sales staff has not been given proper instructions of what can be built on what lots. In regards to that, then in regards to the grading plan, that's, we do, we will have to have our city engineer confirm that they are maintaining the original specifications for the grading plan. And we'll see what we can do about having them provide water trucks to keep the dust down. But other than that, I have no other comments, other than the fact that Kachuma is going down further and further. And last couple days ago, on I-80 going over up through the Donner Pass area, they had the highway closed because of a blizzard and a whiteout. So Northern California is still getting snow and water up there. Unfortunately, we aren't, but they are, so our state water is looking relatively well. But our local water out of Kachuma is, if I was in Santa Barbara, I would see if I could fast-track my D-Sol plant real quick, because it's, there's not going to be too much water coming out of Kachuma in the next couple of months. But anyway, I'm glad you all showed up tonight also. That's my comment.
Mr. Deuce?
Dale, we're not on. I got a text, we're not on.
Okay, I'll get the call-in podcast.
Okay, all right, thanks. I can sympathize. I'm on the other side of the canyon. I get the dust, too. So, and I've been watching, I've been watching the mountain grow, so to speak. Anyway, you've heard, you know, what city manager has said, so there is something being done about this. But thank you for coming in. And that's what it's all about. We do listen here. And no further comments.
Mr. Jameson?
I'll just ditto what everybody said. Thank you very much for coming and pointing out the problems that are going on over there. And this is government at work, and you're the government, too, not just us. If we don't hear from you, we don't know what's going on. So thank you very much. I would like to make a recommendation for agendas. I would like to see a line item of communications. And this would be a perfect example of something that should appear. And just letters that are addressed to the council, not letters that come to the city in general. But I think that this is something that should be included.
I get some consensus, we can add that as a permanent agenda item.
Say, what you're asking for again?
Similar to what ID-1 does, how they have all the correspondence.
They have there, of course, but I don't want all of it. They put everything. I don't want everything. I just want things that are addressed to the city council, because I think that's the people's business. And I would like to see that.
All right, yeah, I agree with that, sure. You agree with that?
Okay, and then, stop me if I've already told you this, that I went to the County School Boards Association Dinner on behalf of the mayor. Did I say that last time? I don't think so. Okay, on behalf of the mayor, I went to the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association Annual Dinner, where they honor the Teacher of the Year and other people also, and it was a very nice function. It's close to my heart, because I spent 17, no, 17, yeah, 17 years on high school board, no, 25 years on elementary and high school boards. So I knew, some of those people are still doing it, which amazes me. That means they've been on longer than I have. But it was a very nice function. It was nice to meet the Teacher of the Year. And then this last Friday, the Chumash Tribe did what is called a soft opening of their new hotel and the improvements they made in the casino. And it's very nice. It's, you know, I don't know feelings of how people feel about that structure, but it was, it's a very nice presentation. And the views are unbelievable. So, thank you.
I have one request.
Go ahead.
Can we look into new video recording equipment and maybe upgrade it? Would that be possible?
We could, if you'd like to agenda something like that.
Look into see what it would cost.
To be honest, in the past, it's not been us. It's been Comcast issue. But we could definitely look at a new modern, you could even go web stream. Those type of things are available. We could bring a staff report back, if you'd like, on options for recording.
I think that'd be good, because not everybody has cable. And we could stream it on the internet, too, you know.
You could.
Not everybody has computers.
Sorry?
Not everybody has computers.
I know, but they have laptop, they have iPads.
No, they don't. A lot of people don't.
Attendance would be available also.
Listen, I'm an old guy, and I finally got an iPhone. I don't know how to run it yet, but you know, there's hope for everybody, I think.
So did I get consensus to bring back an item on...
How we get the message out there.
Options for video recording, okay.
Last Tuesday, I attended the ID-1 board meeting where they were discussing their annual, their draft budget. And I went there and I spoke during public comment time on, we had discussed earlier on this council about a merger with ID-1. And I thought, for my own edification and for theirs, I went as a citizen to offer some suggestions and some issues that that board might want to consider regarding a merger between City of Solvang Water Department and ID-1. And I offered these suggestions that ought to be considered. One, the very most important one, I believe, is employee retention. We have some fantastic employees. We don't want to lose them. We don't want them to lose their jobs as a result of a merger. The other, another one is the asset value of, I'll wait for you guys to leave, and I'll continue. Thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. And you're welcome to stay. They're going to miss the best part of this, by the way. There's more to come.
Well, you know how to clear a room.
The other, there are a couple other issues. One is the asset value of our water department and how it's going to be valued and for an equitable merger. And the suggestion that since we're going to merge, it's not a buyout, that the possibility of increasing the board by two members, and board membership could be the two of the council, our city council members, that the water rates wouldn't increase past our current... council, our city council members, that the water rates wouldn't increase past our current plans for water rate increases. If the merger made the water rates less, that's good, but they cannot make them more than what we would plan for. And we, of course, want to involve LAFCO, although I understand that that's not necessary. But one of the things that struck me is that the tediously long name of the San Andres River Water Conservancy District Improvement District Number One, it's got to change. It's got to be something that reflects the constituency of the valley and also the constituency of Solvang. And I, and so I pass that on to their, to their board and to the, and since our ad hoc committee is here, they've heard my comments, too. Later on in their meeting, they discussed the, their draft budget. And in their draft budget, they talked about how the funds are short and they're going to run into a shortfall this year in their budget of about $800,000. And as a result of that, they have planned to offer a resolution that will be coming up in their June meeting to give us a water rate increase. Now, you won't see the water rate increase on your water bills, but there'll be an ad valorem tax added on to each parcel within the City of Solvang and within the boundary of the ID-1 district. And studying that, I discovered, they had a rate study and a financial study in January. And going through that rate study, it indicated that they were going to add an ad valorem tax. And using their numbers, I found that our impact on that water system is less than 1/100 of a percent of their overall volume, sales, and revenues. They're planning for our revenues to be $56,000 out of a $5.6 million budget. Our water usage is about 40 acre feet out of about 4,000 acre feet of sales. So, and going over that, this ad valorem tax will apply to every property within the City of Solvang, and our impact is minimal on their, on their, on their systems. And I feel that this, this ad valorem tax is unfair, that we may pay as much as half of that ad valorem tax. I'm just, I'm trying to get the numbers now to determine exactly how much we'll be, we'll be paying. But based on the, on the meter counts or the connections, ID-1 has about 2,500 connections as we do. So there's total, there's just over 5,000 water connections in the whole tire systems. And so based on that, I felt that we're being taken advantage of. And in discussing that with them, they said, well, that, that ad valorem tax gives you a portion of a guarantee of water and a guarantee of the stability of the water systems. And I said, well, you know, we pay an added 59 and a half percent increase on our domestic water rates that they sell us versus what they sell the rest of their domestic water users. And they also call us a reseller, which happened several years ago, which is a little bit unfair, I think. But by paying the other 57 and a half percent rate, we get the same benefits that they're claiming that we get by paying the ad valorem taxes, which is, to me, is a, is an injustice. The ad valorem assessment request is $750,000. If we pay half of that, that's, that's a bit much, I think. You know, and I also believe that this ad valorem tax could be the camel's nose under the tent, in the sense that they're going to have to treat the chromium VI problem. They have hexavalent chrome VI problem. And then the numbers I see have been from 12 million to over $20 million worth of payment to that. And that we may, because they have the ad valorem tax set on us, we may be included in that, which, again, we have no reason to, to treat their C6 waters, chromium VI, because we don't use any of it. We use very little bit. So their budget shortfall is a result of their planning and their expenses and so on, like we have. But ID-1 has a $3 million fund set aside for if Solvang doesn't pay its state water bills. I suggest to them that if they help us join CCWA, the Central Coast Water Authority, and deal directly with that board or be a part of that board and divorce ourselves from the state water project at ID-1, that $3 million could be applied to their general budget. So, so as a summary of that is that I'm, I think that there's an unfairness of taxes against the citizens of Solvang, citizens and water users of Solvang. The number is .0017 percent of system impact, and we may be paying as much as half of the assessment. So I want the, I want the, the citizenry to know that. I want the, I want the, I'm sorry that our newspaper reporter isn't here to pick that up, too. But be prepared. So we're going to fight it. I have no other comments. Onto approval of the agenda as presented, so there's only one item. So we'll go on to the city council minutes of May the 7th. Is there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If not, can I have a motion accepting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Consent agenda, does anybody wish to pull any of the items of the consent agenda?
I would just like to make a comment and thank sheriff's department for giving a general location of where incidents happen. We requested that of them, and they're doing that now.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Okay, remember when we asked them to kind of give us an idea of the area where certain incidences were happening?
Yeah.
Okay, they're doing that now.
Okay.
I wanted to say thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Very good, Sean. Is there any other, does anybody wish to pull any of the items? If not, then I can have a motion accepting the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Skip?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yep.
Jameson?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, and that passes with a 5-0. Onto the regular agenda, staff report. Oh, I'm sorry. Please read the agenda.
Item six, general conservation, open space, and safety element updates.
Staff report.
This is the conservation, open space, and safety element update for our general plan. This, these are required elements of the general plan. They were actually prepared and last updated in 1988, which was shortly after the city incorporated, so we're due for, due for a cleanup. It's recommended that agencies, this is, these are considered secondary elements, and after you do your land use, circulation, and housing elements, these are the ones that come next in line. And as council probably remembers, we did our housing element last year. That was a big job, and we got that taken care of. And then you last saw our noise element in 2013. So these are the next elements that are up. And the staff report discusses in some detail the changes, but basically, the conservation element addresses identification, conservation, development, and use of natural resources. Open space identifies plans and measures for preserving open space for a variety of reasons. Because these two elements have quite a bit of overlap and they kind of work together, many agencies do them as one, as we are recommending that you do tonight. Then we also have the safety element. That does establish policies and programs to protect the community from risks associated with seismic, geologic, flood, and wildfire hazards. Again, you can probably see there's an interrelationship with open space and conservation, so it's usually a good idea to update these all together, so they're all consistent and they all work together properly. The Planning Commission heard this last month, and the Planning Commission's changes are shown in the document in a red line strike-through format. The commission also recommended several follow-up projects to implement the elements. They're listed in the staff report as well as in the Planning Commission's resolution to you. But they are, consideration of amendment of the general plan land use map and city zoning map to rezone two properties which are located adjacent to Old Mill Road, which the Planning Commission felt would be good candidates to be zoned open space, to preserve them in that manner. Preparation of an implementation plan for the general plan. You probably remember seeing that big chart at the end of the housing element. What the commission is recommending is that we do a broader scope for the entire general plan. And preparation of both a view protection ordinance and a tree protection ordinance, which the city currently does not have. There's a background report that's included in your packet as well as the draft elements. And as far as environmental review, we had a negative declaration prepared for the project. And on my left, I'd like to introduce or reintroduce David Foote. You've seen Mr. Foote before. He is here with Furman Consultants and with Mr. Dave Moran. These were the consultants we hired to prepare both the background report, the draft elements, and the SEQA document. So Mr. Foote and I are available for questions. And the Planning Commission recommends that the city council adopt an amendment to the general plan consisting of an update to the conservation, open space, and safety elements, and that you approve the negative declaration as an adequate environmental review document. And this concludes my staff report.
Are there any questions to the staff report? Did you all read this one inch?
I looked at the pictures.
The maps.
And they're very pretty.
We're not, we're not making light of it, but boy, listen, I have to hand this to you, you know, that, what you've accomplished with this. This is beautiful. It's thick. Must mean it's excellent. No, I'm joking about that, but no, this is serious, this is serious business, you know, and we're fulfilling our requirements to the state for these plans. Is there any, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Sweet.
Okay, thank you. We're talking here about aircraft operations associated with the San Andres Airport. Do we have anything in here about drones?
The short answer is, in spite of what you hear from league officials, federal law preempts everything anybody in any city in California wants to do on drones yet.
Really?
Yes. So when you hear that, insert the blank, city is in the lead in regulating drones, the only thing a city can do that would be enforceable is pass something that just mirrors what the federal law already says, and then we're still not in charge of enforcing it. And so there isn't anything yet that we can effectively do on, for drones. It's, that's wrong. I don't like it.
So we're still behind?
But we're still stuck.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we can't effectively address that. And, you know, I get paid by the hour, so I would love to tell you to spend, to have me spend lots of time on coming up with a great drone regulation for you. But at this point, it's not, it's not enforceable. It would be great city attorney marketing, but it's not something that's going to work yet. And we're paying attention to it as an issue, as we do with all issues, and that's not part of our chargeable, is as we're paying attention to these things. So we're ready to answer questions like that when they come up.
Okay. What you'll keep is posted, then.
Oh, yeah, I would, yeah, I do think it's, it's an area that cities ought to be able to address. But the current position of the Federal Aviation Administration is that federal law trumps, and they're right. So we've got to have some legislative changes to allow us to regulate. Because we think about it, mostly the reason for having federal law trump aviation is to make sure there's commercial aviation and to make sure there's standards around the nation so that private aviation can be safe. Well, drones is really something completely different. So to regulate it at the federal level, the exact same thing and same way as these other types of things that fly is ridiculous, because the drones are really kind of, they're flying at what should be your jurisdiction. But the current state of law won't let us do that. Yeah, we pay attention to it, we will.
And they're invading people's privacy.
Oh, yes.
Facetiously a question.
Could we change our ordinance on discharge of firearms to allow people to shoot drones down with shotguns?
Yeah. Well, there is, there has been an instance where, I think it was a college student, not a high school student, I'm not sure, but as part of it, maybe it was a high school student as part of a science project, applied science project, took, bought a drone and manufactured it so he could fly the drone and shoot a pistol. So, from the drone. So, that's kids. They're going to figure it out. So, I mean, I'm laughing, but that's, yeah, it's really a serious issue, and we ought to be able to address it, but we're not allowed to yet.
Are there any other questions to staff report?
Yeah, in regards to the cultural and historical resources, is this just kind of general? Do we even set the plan for if they want to, if somebody wants to come and excavate and do some archaeological research, do we have a say over that? Or, I guess, is there anything in here that stands out that should be highlighted?
That's a good question that I've never encountered, but I would suspect that an archaeological excavation project would be a project under SEQA, and that they would need some kind of entitlement to do that and a SEQA document. And they would be subject to state law and SEQA for whatever they discover, and...
Assuming around here that an architectural dig would have something to do with Native Americans, there's also consultation requirements.
So like evidence of this is a potential place and then move forward from there?
Yes.
And they did that when they built the Royal Scandinavian Inn. They had a huge dig there that went on for months and months and months. And the school kids came in and they actually got to participate and learn how it all worked. And it was part of a SEQA situation.
And I don't, I'm not, I don't have any association with Paso Robles, and I don't necessarily want you to go to Walmart, but where the Walmart is in Paso Robles, if you ever happen to be up there, there's a...
A dome?
Yes. And what that dome is, that's, that's a construction method as a result of consultation with the local tribes up there, because when they're doing construction, they found some, something of archaeological significance. And I don't necessarily know all the details. It may be that people had been interred there, and the solution for the local people who were concerned about it was just preserve them right where they're at. So, yeah, that's, that's the kind of thing that results from consultation, because in California, you don't know ahead of time where you're going to find things all the time. And there are some confidential maps out there that I don't even get to look at. But a lot of times, people who are doing construction work in a place where there's nothing shown on any map anywhere are going to find some sites. And that's, I think, generally what is approached by the general plans in these areas.
Well, they actually found all the adobe walls for where the mission had all of the neophytes living. Is that the correct term?
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, then we need to go to the audience for public comment. Is there anybody in the public comment? Karen, would you like to go first? Go ahead.
I just had one, one quick question.
Come on up to the mic.
Thank you. I just had one, a quick question regarding certifying the negative declaration as adequate environmental review. Is that similar to negative consent? I mean, how, what do you mean by that?
What that means is that as a result of the initial study and all the other types of studies they've done, that they've not identified any significant environmental impacts, any significant changes to the physical environment that'll come about from these general plan updates.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
That was it. Thank you.
Gay?
Anne Fonti, Planning Commissioner. And I should have asked this question before. It's for staff, actually. And that is the three additional recommendations that we made for projects concerning an implementation plan for the general plan and two ordinances, one for view protection and one for tree protection. Are those separate actions that the city council would need to act on? Is there not in the resolution?
Yeah, on a new work project, the council would need to give us directions.
I'm sorry?
On a new work product, which is the three items that the Planning Commission is recommending.
Yeah, so if those three recommendations are not included in the resolution, I just wanted to make sure that was true and point that out. So if you want to take the Planning Commission's recommendations on those three additional projects?
Did we see the planning, did we see their...
They're in the Planning Commission resolution, and then I listed them on page two of your, of the staff report.
So they're in the Planning Commission resolution, but not in our resolution?
The Planning Commission resolution contains their recommendation regarding the conservation, open space, and safety element. open space and safety elements and regarding several additional work tasks that the planning commission is recommending you initiate.
So how do we go about initiating those?
I believe you can do that, be a minute action, Brad, or direction to?
Just direction, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even need a minute action.
Yeah.
So we can do that now?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
You just, they wouldn't naturally be part of the resolutions for the action, because the action is just the, the general plan, uh, update and the nega- and certifying the negative declaration. Well, whether or not you want to schedule the work tasks listed on page two of the staff report, um, that's up to you, but it wouldn't be part of the resolution. But it's something you can give us direction on tonight and staff can return at a later date as far as how that, the work, whatever ones you add, work in with what other tasks they have on.
Okay, is that something we vote on or is that just a nod?
I would prefer a nod.
Okay, well then items one through four on page two.
One through four of the, of the discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Include.
I think it should be done, you bet.
So do we have them? We're nodding?
There's a nod over on this end of the dice?
We got three nods.
We got three out of five, so what more do you need?
We won't be around for it anyway.
Exactly, that's what I look at, hey.
We're looking at, uh, those four items under paragraph three discussions on page two. The commission also recommends several follow-up projects to implement the elements, which are listed below, one through four. Do we want to, getting a nod to go ahead and approve to go forward with their recommendations? Okay, that's, that's, Mr. Skid?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the five nods. This, that's, those are technical terms, you know. All right, is there any other comments from here? Is there any other comments from the public? Okay, back to the, uh, council for action.
I move staff's recommendation.
It's been moved, is there a second for staff's recommendation?
Oh, second.
It's been moved in second, it, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes, and that passes with a 5-0.
That was easy.
Next item. Councilmember reports, and that's me. Uh, we had a consent calendar and it included the overall work program that we discussed the month before that, under draft, and so that was approved. And then, uh, the Central Coast California straight freight strategy, um, you know that, uh, that the 101 is not part of the United States freight strategy and, uh, the Central Coast Coalition of the counties from Monterey to Ventura, uh, adopted a strategy to, to hopefully get that included. If, if the, uh, if the 101 is included in the freight route, the United States freight, uh, program, then that means more money for us and, and improvement on the, uh, on the 101 through Santa Barbara County.
So would I speed up through Montecito then?
Uh, yeah, they'd add more money to the project and maybe make it work faster. Yeah.
What's, what's the criteria for getting that done?
It's, it's, uh, it's limited by the, the, the miles that are allocated by the Department of Transportation for freight. And I, seems to me like it's 42,000 miles of, across the nation, and they've eliminated some mileage and they've added some and they've, uh, there are areas where there are two-lane, uh, high freight highways like Highway 58 between, uh, Mojave and, uh, Barstow, for example. That road, that road is, uh, part of the freight route.
That road sucks.
And that, that's an awful one, you know, if you've ever driven that. Well, we talked about the, uh, program, Measure A program of projects, which included the projects in each of the cities and, uh, have to perform within the next five years to get the money from Measure A. We also discussed the unmet transit needs and, uh, I don't recall all of them, but, uh, they were, uh, they were being considered as unmet, uh, there are two, there are two criteria. One is, is it, is it an unmet, uh, transit need that, uh, that is in fact, uh, unmet? And the other was, is if it's an unmet tra- uh, uh, if it's an unmet transit need, can it be economically instituted? Those are the two criteria. And we, the three recommended, uh, unmet transit needs, that's true, they cannot be met and so they, uh, so they languish. Although, an, an interesting one and one that I supported was, uh, the Robinson Bridge on 246th on the way into Lompoc. There's a, uh, a shelter, homeless shelter on the, uh, east side of the river and the trans- and the, the path across the river is a narrow two-foot wide sidewalk on the bridge, well, on a two-lane highway where, that was built in 1930s, where, where trucks go and people get sucked into the roadway and, uh, people are, have been killed there. And, uh, and I suggested, I proposed that as an unmet transit need and the staff went to work on trying to get it met. And what they've done is, what they've accomplished is, uh, talking with the people, it's called the, the bridge, I believe it's the bridge shel- the bridge shelter, that, uh, that they are talking about extending the local, uh, bus, the Colt bus lines to, uh, twice a day to service that area so that people don't have to walk across. People live in that, uh, in that facility and work in Lompoc and they, they work at different hours and they sometimes have to work or catch a ride in. And also the school bus only comes over there in the morning, uh, because they don't come in the afternoon, because the, the facility doesn't open until five o'clock and so they can't, the school bus can't drop kids off until five and they don't do that. So the, the facility has agreed to change their operating hours so that the school bus can bring the kids back from school over there. So it's, it's on the way of doing it and the staff has, uh, has worked difficult, uh, SB CAG staff worked very hard to get that accomplished and they have to be commended. And then, uh, APCD. There's a, uh, a project with portable, uh, air quality sensors that is, are being tried to, they're not, they don't meet federal standards, but they can have a relationship to federal standards and they put these portable, these portable, uh, sensors out in New Cuayama, next to the high school, to, to encourage the high school kids to become aware of talk, of, uh, bad air and, uh, particulates. And they've, uh, they've had greater deal of success. The science teacher out there has, uh, included the kids in, in the measurement and the, and the installation of this thing. And it's a study to see the relationship between the federal standards and these, these portable, uh, pieces that, uh, that don't have as much capability as the federal monitoring stations. And then, of course, uh, I forgot to mention that, uh, all the, all the boards I've been on lately are studying, uh, budgets. So we get received preliminary budget information on both SB CAG and, uh, APCD. And with that, that's the end of my report. Is there any other reports? Okay. Then next, uh, we go into closed session. Would you please announce that, Lisa?
Government Code Section 54957, personnel evaluation, city manager. Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiators. Agency designated representative, Brad Vidor, city manager. Employee organization Teamsters Local 986. And Government Code Subdivision A of Section 54956.9, existing litigation, amendment to permit 15878 in front of the State Water Resources Control Board.
And we're adjourned to closed session.